Today is Tuesday, January 13th, the year 2015. It's about 4:02. I'd like to call this meeting. And if you would call, roll, that would be fine.
Commissioner Durancheck.
Here.
Begic.
Here.
Conan.
Here.
Herrick.
Excuse me.
Tilly.
Here.
Lutz.
Here.
Friger.
Yes.
Six members present.
Thank you. We'll stand for the invocation and the pledge.
Eternal Father, you have placed in us a world of space and time. Through the events of our lives, you bless us with your love. Lord, we ask that you grant to this Board of Commissioners and all those in authority, patience and understanding. Let us begin this new year, Lord, working together for the good of all people. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You've all had an opportunity to look at the minutes. What's your pleasure?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll move on to citizens' input. This would be a time for anyone that'd like to address the Board of Commissioners. If you come up, state your name and address, if you would, please.
My name is Marty Murphy. I'm there to talk about the Bay County Title and Senior Citizen Center and also Center Plaza. I found out that Charlie Brunner, Representative Brunner, was an active board member of the those two centers, and I've been doing a lot of discussions with him. And I just want to play a voicemail from Mr. Brunner before I go into my presentation.
One second.
Yeah, Marty, so, uh, sorry.
Marty, if you'll turn that off a second. I don't know what the circumstances were when that was recorded, and I guess I would come back to counsel. I don't know if it's something that we want to play in public without his...
This is public input, and I have a right to redress agreements.
But I don't know...
I feel this is important for that everyone to hear, and this is part of my presentation.
I understand that, but I don't know the circumstances that Mr. Brunner was recorded on there. If he knew it was being recorded...
It's a voice. He called my phone and left a voicemail. That's a voicemail. He knew it was recorded, and it's not legal. It is, it's not illegal, it's legal. He recorded. He knew it was being recorded when he played, when he answered, called my phone and played a message.
All right. So give me the courtesy of at least asking corporate counsel, in her, in your opinion...
There is no violation of state law disclosing a conversation with a third party if that party in fact knew that they were being recorded and were part of the conversation.
All right.
This would qualify.
Okay.
[inaudible] So you're posting, you know, I'll tell you what, you give me the list of whatever allegations that you have, and I will get you some direct answers as far as, if you work out with, I will go to whatever state agency I need to make sure that, you know, evaluations or whatever they do on an annual basis. But I know you make some very spotty allegations, and I don't take those lightly, Marty. So if you give me the list, and I will get you some answers, I promise you. You're right, I can't go after State Agency or solve your base allegations, and we will get those investigated. I promise you that. So I'll be back, so that we can discuss that, whatever you got. That's, you know, allegations that are made about the center, as long as you can, you know, let's know what your source is as well. You know, I will, I will investigate those for you, if I get to report, and we will definitely get you some answers. So sorry I didn't call you back, Marty. I probably should have done that. You know, you have some additional things you ought to talk to me about, but in any event, give me a call back, so you guys could give me whatever information you have, and I will, I promise you, I'll get it investigated. Charles Brunner, 99.
I just thought that was just, yeah, so, um, Representative Brunner could have responded in several ways. He could investigate the allegations and let the chips fall where they may, or he could pull a Lance Armstrong and deny the accusations through all of his, and with through all of his legal and political power, crush the person who'd make him answer the questions. As you can see, Representative Brunner, this is not a yellow shirt. This is the bulk of children's safety. I talked, I talked to Representative Brunner and I asked him to investigate. I based my questions on court documentations, depositions, state investigations, police reports, person-to-person investigation. Questions that I asked Mr. Brunner to investigate are: what happened with Marie Webb money? The director, the director was paying her husband to do maintenance work. Her husband could have been paid up to $50,000 a year. He has a full-time job as a bank township supervisor. The center has full-time maintenance, maintenance employees. The director's son introduced cocaine to another employee, $1,000 worth of cocaine the first time. The director's son fought with the director and ripped off the mirror of the daycare vehicle. The director's son getting into a bar fight and being put into the hospital. The director instructed an employee to lie up to state inspectors. The director lied to state inspectors. The director giving away a daycare center payment. The director knew two employees' cocaine use while they were working at the daycare center. The director employees hired, the director employed at least four drug users. The director has unqualified employees. The director knowingly hired a person with a felony arrest warrant. The director, the director unlawfully terminated a former employee's health care coverage, knowing that the person could have cancer, knowing the person could have cancer, cancer concerns. The director filed a false police report. The director's son was arrested for illegal drug use and still employed, and still employing him. The director has a policy of informing, not informing the parents when something bad happens to children. There could have been drug use at the daycare center, drug dealing at the daycare center. The director did not. Drug test employees were caught doing illegal drugs. I'm asking you for your help in ensuring the safety of children of the Bay County. I am asking you to ask representatives for his findings and his investigation. I'm asking for the county to make sure that all regulations are being followed at the daycare center, all inspections are being updated. If drug testing is required, make sure that the employees are being tested for drugs. If background checks, make sure that they're being checked. If the county gives money to the daycare center, I ask that you withhold the money until all questions are asked. And did the daycare director break any laws? What kind, what kind of person would unlawfully terminate a person's health care coverage, knowing the person could have cancer? What kind of person would instruct an employee to lie to state inspectors? What kind of person would file a false police report? What kind of person would let drug users watch children? What kind of person would you want watching Bay County's children? If you have any questions or information that I have, I'd be glad to give to you, and I hope that we take this seriously and protect the children of Bay County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Anyone else wish to address the board? Afternoon, Mr. Strauss.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. The Bay County Health Department with the Saginaw Valley State University College of Health and Human Services is pleased to announce the opening of the University Clinic next week on Tuesday, January 20th. The University Clinic will provide high-quality primary care medical services for patients of all ages, from routine and preventative care to more complicated chronic physicians, but is primarily intended for the underserved or persons that do not have access to primary care. At the University Clinic, they will be using an integrated interprofessional care model led by nurse practitioners, combining services for both physical, social work, pharmacy, and occupational health disciplines in one discipline, under one roof. Simply put, the integrated care model recognizes multiple factors that can affect a person's health. Treating these conditions as a whole makes a successful outcome for each patient more likely. The University Clinic will specialize in the care of veterans and individuals with mental health diagnosis as well. If a person would like to become a patient of the University Clinic, we ask two things. Number one, if they do not currently have health insurance, we ask that they contact the Bay Health Plan at 895-4008 and make an appointment to go to speak with an eligibility specialist to determine if they will qualify for Medicaid, Medicare, private health insurance through the exchange system, or other benefits through Bay Health Plan itself. If you already have insurance, a person may call, Bay County residents may call 989-895-2035 to schedule an appointment.
Joel, the location of this, is this on the corner of Bay and Pierce?
No, it is not. It is at the Bay County Health Department at 1200 Washington Avenue.
Very good.
That's a good question, the hours. First, next week is different because of the holiday. The hours are going to be Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, 8 till 5 p.m. It's going to be 9 till 4 p.m.
Commissioner Conan?
Joel, you know, folks that qualify for Medicaid probably have some, they wouldn't be considered underserved, would they?
They may. With the Medicaid expansion, there's a number of folks out there, a number of participants that have been assigned a doctor or assigned a physician in Saginaw or Midland, and they may not have transportation to that, or they may be at least three to five months out to being able to get an appointment.
Okay. And then the question I have is somebody that is not, does not qualify, but picks up a policy of a very high deductible, would they therefore qualify, be considered underserved?
They could be considered underserved, yes.
But ultimately, they should contact you to find out where they fall in the game.
That is correct.
Very good. Anyone else? Commissioner Begic.
Yes, the Nichols plan, I think we get quite a few. We're finding a lot of them do qualify for the Healthy Michigan Plan, so, and I agree, a lot of them can't get in. They're assigned to a primary, but it's like three to four or five months before they get in, and a lot of them have medications that they need filled before then, so that's why a lot of them come to an urgent care then, too.
Yes, and it's important to note that the University Clinic will not be an urgent care center. We have a number of those in the community, and they're doing a great job. The University Care Center is also, it's a primary care clinic, and it being only open initially three days a week, for those folks that already do have physicians or a primary care provider, that they should be set. We're really targeting people that are underserved, that can't find a doctor, or can't, don't have the resources to get into the doctor.
Commissioner Conan?
Just in, Andy, I think it's a great opportunity that you and administration are working in providing that service, because there's people out there that do need it, so I think it's a great collaborative arrangement with Saginaw Valley and Bay County, so kudos on doing a great job.
Thank you. We hope to make this a huge...
Administration as well.
Good job, Joel.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Nope.
Yep. Afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Trevor Keats. I represent Bay Future Incorporated, 721 Washington Avenue, Suite 309. I think most of you know who I am, but most of you don't know, our new president and CEO, his name is Mark Litten, and I'd like Mark to kind of address the commission, introduce himself, and field any, any short questions that you might have. He has only been here for a week, so...
Welcome to Bay County.
Thank you, Commissioners. Like I said, my name is Mark Litten. I'm the president and CEO of Bay Future. I come from, I guess some of you would call it the state down south. That's why I have red on today.
We won't hold that against you.
It's a very healthy ride, boy. We like, we like green and white, too. Had a chance to meet several county representatives. Mr. Hickner was here when I first came up, had dinner with my wife and I in October. Commissioner Tilly's on the Bay Future Board representing the county. We appreciate his involvement, engagement, by Commissioner Conan, and look forward to working with all of you. We're hoping to take Bay Future to the next level. I think that was part of the reason that they offered me the position, and I was fortunate enough to be offered, and I'm grateful to be here. We want to put a new strategic action plan in place. That's kind of priority one for me, to outline what our goals and objectives are going to be, and then follow that, that roadmap or blueprint. I think nonprofits in the past have had trouble putting together a business plan, solid business plan, and implementing it, so that's kind of where my strengths are, and I've been in the economic development field for about 25 years down in Ohio, so we're looking forward to bringing some of that up here and hopefully increasing the economic vitality of Bay County. So if you have any short questions, you can always stop in the office. We welcome you to visit. Ask me to come back anytime you want, I'll be here, but I just wanted today just to introduce myself, so you should put a face with a name.
Very good.
And go from there.
Again, welcome to Bay County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the board? If no one else, we'll move into petitions and communications. Under A, we have a Blue Cross Blue Shield presentation with a trophy to Bay County, I believe Nicole Goseman. Well, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me, Mr. Chairman. Like, like I was introduced, I'm Nicole Gomez. I'm the account manager for Blue Cross for Bay County. Thank you for welcoming me here today. On behalf of Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan, I am pleased to congratulate Bay County for winning your respective category in the Blues Win By Losing competition. I'd like to present you with this award, it's in gray. And I'd like to show the shirts that each of the participants are going to be getting. There were 15 teams in your total division, and your total percentage of weight loss was 58% of those 15, and that's huge. So congratulations. Bay County rallied to lose 228 pounds during the nine-week competition, giving you the ultimate bragging rights. Since we started this program in fall of 2009, the grand total of weight loss by participating teams has totaled over 79,000 pounds, which is great. We encourage you to participate in this program again and to keep exercising and eating well, and I'm thrilled to announce that we're going to be kicking off another exciting round of Win By Losing on February 23rd. I know that's a good thing to start right now, because we're all getting into New Year's resolutions, and thank you again for your participation, and congratulations.
Well, thank you. I guess there must be some people here that participated, and I don't want to put anybody on the spot like Mr. Quinn, but maybe some of the individuals that, that were involved with this, if you'd stand, that would be kind of nice for people to see who's...
[inaudible]
Yeah.
Most people wanted to read the...
Oh, anonymous.
Yes.
All right, so you're, you're accepting the pros before the cons. Well, thank you so very much, and I'm sure that they won't let you down in the next round. How, Mr. Quinn?
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Nice award. How, Mr. Quinn?
Very nice.
Yep. All right. Mr. Hickner?
I was just going to say, leading up to the contest that starts on the 23rd, we're going to have donuts every day in the office, if anybody wants to bulk up.
All right. Moving right along. So, Jeannie, you're here to do a wellness report for us, if you would, please?
Yes, I'm Jeannie Decker, belongs for DNR, as well as you know, and in the agenda, there should have been information on the Wellness Center for November and December. We are in the middle of racking up some of the cost savings for the year, so I don't have cost savings specifically to report on, and that would be for pharmacy. We want to compare where we were in 2013 to where we were in 2014, to see how many extra prescriptions were actually filled because of the Wellness Center opportunities for re generics. So that's one big thing. And then labs also, and then we're also going to compare office visits to see where we were in 13 compared to where we were in 14 because of the plan change requiring people to get the physical. I can say we had about 60% of just employees went to the Wellness Center, and then the other 40% was compromised of their dependents and their spouses. We had a lot of cost savings that I can report on in reference to prescriptions. There was numerous prescriptions that the Wellness Center pharmacy filled for free, just as a courtesy, and they also saved a couple of members on prescription. One member in particular saved over $500. Another saved 70, and another saved at least 30. We have had people report to me that they quit smoking, their cholesterol was lower because of prescriptions they were changing, too, and early detection saved probably at least four lives that I know of, and also numerous people reported on weight loss. So in that respect, for the soft savings, that was good. We had more females than we did males, but obviously, not knowing who went, I can just say, I don't know if it was dependents, or if it was employees or spouses. 492 visits for the, new visits for the entire year, and over 1,000 return visits. So it's kind of where we were at with the information that I have year-to-date.
Jeannie, I have a question for you. When you talked about the savings on prescription drugs, was that a year that they saved, or every month?
The $500 one, I know, was a 90-day prescription. The cost was over $900 for the 90-day, and the member ended up paying like 400.
Very good. Commissioner Conan?
So we should see a savings as well, being that we uploaded some money to that particular clinic, so if they provided some prescriptions, we're not paying for the prescriptions on top of what we front-loaded, are we? So we should see some savings there.
The generic prescriptions were all free for employees.
For the employees, but somehow, at some point, we're not paying for those because we paid a flat fee for the year, correct?
No. Do we have a prescription charge?
From the...
From the pharmacy.
Okay.
Yeah. It's very minimal, because they give us the lowest negotiation rate that they can, and a lot of them are free.
Good.
The higher-end prescriptions.
Okay.
That could be fully free.
Mr. Quinn?
Just to kind of add to what Jeannie said, we, you know, some of these things are hard to determine, but over time, we would expect that we'll have less ready-mid type calls or emergency calls, and ER, and the average cost of ER business is around $1,100. So the real savings, though, will come in the long term.
I know these reports are being ran to, to see where we were at in 13 for emergency room visits compared to 14.
Anyone else? I did notice on one of the reports that was out there on the customer satisfaction...
Yes.
I mean, very high ratings, you know, for something that is new as, as what this program is. It's to be commended to the people that, that handled this clinic in taking care of our, our employees' needs, so...
Yeah, the positive definitely outweighs the negative with respect to the employees over there.
Very good. Motion to receive would be in order.
So moved.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Move right on. We're into reports and resolutions of committees, Ways and Means. Commissioner Conan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. From the Ways and Means Committee, we have Resolution 2015-1. This is a governmental contract for the establishment of substance use disorder oversight policy from VABH. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries.
Resolution 2015-2. This is a contract with the correctional healthcare companies for inmate care from the Sheriff's Department and Juvenile Home. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Commissioner Begic?
This is the one I missed last time around, but the charges for the nurse practitioner was like $100 an hour, but later on, it explained that it's not just her, it's the doctor coverage, and it's some other expenses in there, too, so I just thought that was a pretty high hourly rate, and I was going to apply for the job, but, but there's other expenses involved, too.
You're too, you're too old.
Yes.
All right. Any other discussion? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries.
Resolution 2015-3. This is the 2015 Marine Safety Grant Program from the Sheriff's Department. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussions. I do have one question. On this grant money, and it's for marine safety, does it also involve the vehicles that are being used, whether it be a jet ski or, or boat, maybe sheriff?
Basically for agents, and there's some in there for the war.
Okay.
It involves more vehicles at this time.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Any other discussion? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries.
Resolution 2015-4. This is the Michigan Department of Community Health Grant regarding public health strategies from the Health Department. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries.
Resolution 2015-5. Amendment number one to the 2014-2015 Comprehensive Planning Contract with the Health Department. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries.
Resolution 2015-6. This is the 2015 Property Liability Insurance for the Center Ridge Arms from the Housing Department. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2015-7. This is the 2015 Hazardous Material Emergency Preparedness Grant from LEPC, the Emergency Management. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2015-8. Solid Waste Plan Amendment. This is the transfer facility from the Environmental Affairs and Community Development. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Commissioner Begic?
As I mentioned, we've been working on this for a while. I was at the Auburn meeting last night, and I mentioned, hopefully we'll prove it today, and it'll be coming out to the townships and the cities for them to look at, and hopefully get their approval, so we can move forward on it.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a while, but it's, it's finally coming to be, so... Any other discussion? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries.
Resolution 2015-9. A desiccant wheel and seal kit for the pro side rink at the Civic Arena. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries.
2015-10. Speed Connect LLC lease renewal buildings and grounds. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2015-11. This is an RFP for the Community Center, Jim Flor. It's a replacement project. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. I have one question for Kristen. I hear that we have a new color on the walls?
We do. We do. It's a grayish, bluish color. It's really pretty, and then there's a red stripe, so both the small and the large gem are painted.
So when you swit, it'll be sweeter?
Yes. It looks really good. You guys should check it out.
Any other development for more money, as far as grants for the floor?
We're waiting on a $10,000 grant from the Michigan Baseball Association, but we shouldn't hear about that until maybe around March, late February, beginning of March, and then I'm still looking to apply for more.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Begic?
I was there right after they painted it, and it smelled nice, too, and looked nice and fresh, compared to what it looked like for the last 30 years.
There you go. It's amazing what a coat of paint will do for you, even when you're getting old, huh, Vaughn? All right. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?[1753.13] It's amazing what a coat of paint will do for you, even when you're getting old, huh, Vaughn? All right. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2015-12. This is the revised 2015 user fee schedule from the Finance Department. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2015-13. Contract with Near Advantage for the Primary Internet Services. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2015-14. This is the payable for accounts, county accounts payable, bayonet, housing, Center Ridge Arms. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2015-15. Tandem axle dump truck, buildings and grounds. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Chairman, that's all the business from Ways and Means.
Thank you, Commissioner Conan. We'll move into Personnel and Human Services. Commissioner Lutz?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two items. One is listed, and one is not. First is, like I said, make a motion for the independent contractor agreement with Sammy J. Gill, Resolution Number 2015-16.
Support.
Discussion. No discussion, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next, Mr. Chairman, as we have, I'd like to bring before us Resolution 2015-19, which is the Personnel and Human Services Committee action for hiring a division on aging driver part-time, the treasurer's office, county clerk, too, temporary, full-time, and the environmental affairs, community development, transportation planner, geographic information systems technician, full-time.
Support.
Discussion. With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And that's all I have at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Lutz. We'll move into Board of Commissioners. It would be Commissioner Tilly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have Resolution 2015-17, the reports to the county executive. I so move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And that concludes business from the Board of Commissioners, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Tilly. We move into reports of county officials and departments, and under A, we talk to county exec and personnel director, anything. Corporate counsel seeking concurrence of an appointment of Amber Davis Johnson to corporate counsel. Okay? Tilly supported.
Tim Quinn.
Tim Quinn, I'm sorry. Mr. Quinn?
Due to a number of verbs, I forgot to ask for a budget adjustment in addition to the reclassification. I'd like to have the board consider making that in addition.
Commissioner Conan?
You can do that at any time. Tim, you can do it next month, or what?
Okay.
Because we want to know what it is, and you might not know exactly what it is right off the top of your head.
Yes, I do.
Oh.
Well, I know what it is for most, I don't know.
Well, you prepare. We can do it next month.
Okay. Any other discussion? You're all set with that, then, Kim?
Yeah.
All right. So, without any further discussion, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then, number two, Act 139 Department seeking acceptance of an updated list.
Support.
Discussions. With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We'll move right on into unfinished business. Do we have anything unfinished? Any new business? Mr. Lutz?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know how many Commissioners received emails from Dr. Catherine Roden Beck dropped the cat, but I have one here that will speak to where we're at on this particular.
Okay.
Yes, it's my understanding that everyone's been apprised of an animal cruelty complaint that we received relative to a cat that was found on Hidden Road, and I'd like you to know, if you will note the date of the email that I received, it was sent yesterday, I opened it as recent as this morning. This morning, we sent two animal control officers up to that location who were conducting a canvass of the neighborhood to see if anyone was aware of who might have perpetrated this action on this cat. They found no one, and in fact, most of the residents weren't aware that an elderly gentleman who passed away some time ago, and unfortunately, was found for 10 days, not that's true, except that the cats were now uncared for, all right, that they even, he was even harboring feral cats, but he was, and this cat happened to be one of them, trapped by a neighbor as a feral cat, taken to a vet, and sterilized, later found by its back, their back door in the condition in which she doesn't, the vet describes it, and you may have received copies of the photos as well, I don't know. But again, as I say, we have undertaken an investigation, as is pointed out in a letter from my superior, Deb Russell, to all of you Commissioners, and we are conducting an investigation in the matter. Should we locate and determine who the perpetrator was, certainly will file up actions involving the custody and returns, obviously, in the form of a warrant. So, there it stands at this point, and we'll continue to pursue the capture of those cats remaining. In fact, during their canvass, they took a trap with them and captured yet another feral cat that the person who was sterilizing them in the neighborhood was glad to accept and take to this very same vet for sterilization.
How many cats are loose?
While we're not certain, they are feral, and we estimate, ladies that went out, the animal control officers that went out, estimate that judging by the traffic between the neighbor and the house in which they were housed for a long time, and abandoned vehicles, as well as a garage, probably a dozen. So, she is in the process of trapping them, we are as well, we'll, you know, we'll police the traps, and as they're captured, we'll turn them over to her for sterilization.
Okay.
But I'll keep you apprised as to how the investigation proceeds.
Thank you, Michael. Any questions for Mike on it? Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Any other new business? Any miscellaneous? Announcements for the Board, 2015 Committee assignments, a motion to receive would be in order?
So, support.
Discussion on those assignments, anyone? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under appointments for 2015, in March, we have Behavioral Health Authority, three, three-year expiring terms. Right now, Pat McFarland, myself, and Bill Powell are there, so that's coming up in March. In June, we have a Library Board, one five-year term. In October, we have a Land Bank Authority, this is a Net Large representative for a three-year term, and we also have Department of Human Services Board of Directors. This is a three-year term, and this is normally appointed by the governor, not something done by, by us. We also have Board of Canvassers, there's two four-year terms, and note that the nominees are submitted by both parties, both Republican and Democrat. In November, we have a Building Authority, two six-year terms. In December, Division on Aging Advisory Committee, four two-year terms in Districts 1, 3, 5, and 7. Okay? Next on the list is a need for closed session.
Yes, Mr. Chair, a request that we go into closed session pursuant to MCL 15.268 subsection H.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Randchuk?
Yes.
Begic?
Yes.
Conan?
Yes.
Eric?
Excuse?
Excuse, Tilly?
Yes.
Lutz?
Yes.
Three years.
Yes.
Six days, zero days, one excuse.
Very good. Mr. Mike?
Listen to my friend. Okay. A motion to adjourn would be in order.
Support.
Some movement.
Support.
Good. And it's supported. Any discussion? Of course, none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.